This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the August 7th, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present. Commissioner Roth is attending virtually. Commissioner Roth, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Very good. Thank you. At this time, I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I would ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public and virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the board commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on July 29th and also prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. And Item D, I would ask us all to please bow our heads for a moment of silence for former South Whitehall Township Public Works employee Dorsey L. Rutter, who passed away on Saturday, July 27th, 2024. Dorsey was employed for over 30 years by the township from February 12th of 1983 to May 31st of 2013 as a Public Works Maintenance Assistant. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Agenda Item 4 is courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who would like to address the board? Yes, ma'am. If you'd please come up to the podium. Good evening, and if you would just give us your name and address for the record.
It's Janette Moore, 3815 Broadway.
Thank you.
Okay. Please bear with me. I had an eye emergency today, but I'm here. And I'm here tonight speaking for myself and my neighbors on a ruling passed by the zoning board on April 24th. The ruling was passed allowing relief for a property at 3821 Broadway. It's an undeveloped lot which you're trying to shoehorn a proposed new home. And the reliefs were as follows. The minimum lot size required is 7,200 feet. They requested 25, 30 square feet, and it was granted. They requested one foot along Adams Street, and a minimum yard setback is 10 feet, and they were granted the one foot. The side yard setback is 10 feet, and along the east side of the property, they were granted a two-foot setback. The lot size is 20 by 1/26, and they're putting a 17 by 42 and 1/2 story building there. I would like to also add that the parking pad that they're planning is just minimum dimensions for two vehicles. This would require each vehicle to pull out, back out onto Adams Street. Those people exiting Court Street, which is intersecting to Adam, are, excuse me, like I said, I have a problem. Vehicles exiting Court Street onto Adams would have their site reduced by two vehicles on this pad. And since there is already safety issues trying to pull out onto Adams Street because there's also two telephone poles on either side, it's going to make it more hazardous than it already is. And since there's already safety issues with trying to pull out, oh, I'm sorry. And as you can see on the plot plan, which was handed out to you, oh, here they come. Okay, as you can see on the plot plan how close they plan to build the house to Adams Street. On the comprehensive township plan, if Adams Street were widened to what it's suggested on there, it's going to make the house be a mere 12 inches from the street way. And if, in addition to that, if that were to happen, even the snowplows wouldn't be able to go through. Also, how all the contractors build on this tiny lot without, trying to stay within the confines of their, you know, their limited access. Trying to work through all this. And even when they do build, I don't know about the heavy equipment, but even two feet to the property line on the east side, they wouldn't even be able to put ladders on to get up to the house. So, also, the other thing that was not addressed by the zoning board was we have a terrible rainwater runoff, which everybody on the east side of Adams Street gets water in either their houses or their yards. And putting something there that's going to make more, you know, cement areas, it's going to make the water problem worse. So, what I would like to ask the board to review these requests and hopefully reject the zoning board's ruling.
Ms. Moore, you finished with your comments? Very good. So, if I understand you correct, this ruling was approved by the zoning board on April 24th. Is that correct? Tom, can you confirm?
It looks like the April zoning hearing board was canceled. I think it was reviewed. Yeah, correct.
July 24th.
Oh, 7/24. I'm sorry. July.
Correct.
So, at this point, zoning hearing board is a quasi-judicial board. So, if they've made a ruling.
Pardon me?
They are a quasi-judicial board, and they have made their ruling, their decision on this. Were you present at the meeting?
Yes.
And you spoke?
Yes, a lot of us spoke.
Tom, at this point, is there any action? The Board of Commissioners?
You're still within, you're still within the window where a decision has not been rendered. So, you would be within your rights to appeal a decision to the zoning hearing board if the decision was rendered on July 24th.
We are still within the window.
You're still within the window.
So, at this point, we thank you for bringing this to our attention. We will have our internal staff and township manager review this information and let the board know what options we might have.
Okay.
On this matter.
Okay, because we're limited on time because they already published the letter last Monday, four days after the 24th, of their decision letter, what came out.
Yeah, we're still within, we're still within the appeal window. We're still within the appeal window.
Yeah, we are now.
30 days from the issuance of a decision.
Okay, so we've got the remainder of...
Yeah, we'll investigate further and report back to the board commissioners.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Is there anyone else present who would like to address the board this evening? Is there anyone online, Chris, with any public comment? There is not. Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5. Meeting minutes from the July 17th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting have been distributed for your review. Are there any comments or questions? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
A second. Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5 to 0. Then to Item 6. We have a presentation this evening from our interim chief Brown will present for our South Whitehall Township Police Department for badge pinning ceremony for a new officer to the township, Officer Jacob D. Warrenette. And I'll turn it over to interim chief Brown.
Jacob, you want to come on up? Please introduce Officer Jacob Warrenette. He's a graduate of Indian Hills High School in New Jersey. He attended York College of Pennsylvania in 2016, where he graduated with bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Officer Warrenette began his law enforcement career as a special class officer, 1 and 2, with the Holden Police Department in New Jersey, where he worked summers from 2015 until 2019. Jake was then hired by the City of Philadelphia Police Department in 2019. He comes to our department with over five years experience as a certified Act 120 police officer.
They're not the easiest things to call. Especially when you're wearing a shirt.
If the board would please step down, we'd like to take a photograph with Officer Warrenette. I want to thank Jacob's family and our township police officers who are in the back of the room tonight for attending and for showing your support, and we welcome you to our community and wish you the best on this next chapter of your life. Moving on to Agenda Item 7A ordinances. We have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 2, General Legislation, Chapter 240, Parks and Recreation of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township in its entirety, enforcement of violations, fines, and penalties, repealer, failure to enforce, not a waiver, severability, and an effective date. And Tom, if you'd please present this agenda item.
Thank you. So, as discussed at the last board meeting, township officials are receiving complaints and are observing the following activities at Cover Bridge Park. So, we're seeing loud music played along the banks and in the Jordan Creek, cooking activities and grilling along the banks and in the Jordan Creek, taking township property into the Jordan Creek, placing picnic tables and other objects into the Jordan Creek, littering along the banks of the Jordan Creek, and parking vehicles in areas that are not designated for parking. So, in response to these issues, the township has put together a draft amendment to Chapter 240 of the Township Code of Ordinances, which would be a complete revamp of our current parks' rules and regulations across all park properties owned and maintained by the township. So, the ordinance was drafted with the feedback received from members of the public and the governing body, as well as, again, the aforementioned direct observations of the police department and public works personnel in a review of multiple existing regulations from other communities. So, the police department, command staff, public works, parks, recreation management personnel, coenforcement personnel, and community development personnel all provided their comments on the draft ordinance. So, I'll go through a summary of the key revised provisions. So, essentially, this ordinance requires a permit to be obtained for multiple activities. So, if you're looking to use the recreational buildings, pavilions, and associated grounds, you would need a permit. Use of athletic fields, you would need a permit also to reserve any area in the park system for use. The ordinance defines an event, a semblance, or an activity which 10 or more people are expected to attend would require a permit. So, it would not be applicable, though, to individuals and groups that are utilizing the playground facilities at the direct location of the playground facility. Also, using the park for commercial purposes would require permits, for example, trying to sell items or seminars, things of that nature. And then also, it memorializes the special event permit process that the township has already implemented for 5K runs, 10K runs, examples, birthday parties, company picnics, weddings, et cetera, where you would need to obtain a special event permit from the township in order to hold those events in a township park. Also, special events in a township park that anticipate attendance of over 1,000 attendees shall submit an emergency action plan to the township for review and approval of the police department, the township manager, and the emergency management director. Also, this ordinance provides standards for the operation of motor vehicles in the park, generally following Title 75. Provides regulations to protect natural areas, the natural environment, and plant life, and also there's specific provisions on aeronautical activities, alcoholic beverages, amusement and play equipment, animals, birds, and reptiles, audio equipment in use, boating, camping, dogs, pets, and other animals, firearms and weapons, fires, fireworks and explosives, fishing, interference with township personnel, courses, hunting and trapping, illegal drugs and controlled substances, littering, peddling and soliciting, and personal conduct, including disorderly conduct. Swimming, bathing, and wading is also memorialized in this ordinance, as well as trespassing and vandalism. Other miscellaneous prohibited activities include tampering with any township equipment such as drinking fountains or hydrants, gambling in any form, dumping or disposing of waste, garbage, or unwanted material that was not accumulated during use of the park system, urinating or defecating anywhere in the park system other than in a restroom or facility provided for such purposes, engaging in any form of golfing activity except at designated golfing areas, throwing rocks, stones, or other objects from any overlook or cliff, failing to obey a posted park sign, using a skateboard, inline skates, or similar wheeled apparatus or equipment except within an area designated as a skate park or on paved roadways, camping in the park system unless authorized by the township as part of an official township-directed special event, constructing or occupying any man-made survival shelter, sorry, in the park system unless part of an official park system program, and then drafting, also drafting water from waterways that run through the park system without obtaining written permission from township manager, considering what are other regulations, using a tobacco product or electronic cigarette in any form within 50 feet of a recreational field or facility or playground, releasing balloons or sky lanterns within the park system, discharging or otherwise placing or caused to be placed in the waters of any fountain, pond, lake stream, or other body of water, in or adjacent to any park or any tributary stream, storm sewer, or drain flowing into such water, or any substance, matter, or thing, liquid or solid, which will result in the pollution or altering of the flow of such waters, placing chairs, picnic tables, tables, or any similar objects in township-controlled waters would be prohibited, placing and utilizing grills and griddles, or any similar portable cooking equipment shall not be permitted in township-controlled waters. Additionally, grilling and similar items would only be permitted in areas that are specified within the park and provided for by the park unless approved as part of a special permit or a pavilion permit. In addition to the revised regulations, the township has also taken some short-term actions at the park to attempt to mitigate the observed instances of behavior. So, we've removed the rope swings and the limbs of the trees where the rope swings were traditionally attached. We've provided additional staffing, which results in overtime for public works and police department personnel during peak time periods. So, we've been staffing the park every weekend. Police department personnel have posted an additional duty job posting for Cover Bridge Park. That's their past practice, and this will continue. And then we've recently started using public works personnel as well, which we'll implement through the Labor Day weekend at a minimum. We've also extended the parking lot split-rail fence in Cover Bridge Park to extend the fence all the way to where the driveway is from the parking lot. We've also placed a permanent bollard on the walking path that leads to Pavilion Number 3 due to an unidentified safety issue with cars driving on that section getting to the pavilion. We also discussed some other options we could take to address the reported issues. We believe that clear and concise rules and regulations are needed memorialized within signage in the park, and we believe it should be bilingual signage following the adoption of any rules and regulations that the board provides for in this ordinance. And we also believe it's appropriate to increase the pavilion rental fee for non-residents from $150 to $300. This would need to be incorporated into a schedule of fees revision, which must be done by resolution and approved by the governing body. So, for reference, the current rate for non-residents is 85, and the current rate, I'm sorry, the current rate for residents is 85, and the current rate for non-residents is 150. Following any direction or discussion that we have here this evening, there would be three motions which we would seek for approval. So, number one would be to incorporate any revisions to the draft amendment if the board identifies any necessary revisions as applicable. And then two would be to send the draft amendment to the township solicitor for review. And then three would be to motion advertise the amendment for adoption following receipt of incorporation of all township solicitor comments, provided that the comments of this township solicitor do not substantively alter the intent of the revised rules and regulations.
Thank you for reviewing that memo with us, and also thank you for drafting this ordinance as the township seeks to implement consistent policies and regulations to protect our parks, our natural resources, and keep them a safe and enjoyable place for our residents and visitors. One question that I had when I reviewed this, I know that at times we have, and the park has been closed, and the gates have been closed when there's been a weather event, there have been visitors that have not adhered to the park closed signs. Do we, to add any language to this ordinance that would include the ability to enforce when the park is closed in those types of incidents?
I think it's covered in the catch-all for not obeying any township directive, but I can add a provision to make that more clear. So, I can add that language very easily.
I think, given the flooding that we've had at that park historically, I've noted visitors there when the flooding was at its highest, and I'm concerned for the safety of our visitors.
At that point, it would be considered trespassing since the park is closed. But I can confirm that in the language.
Very good. Thank you. I will open it up to the board. If there are any questions or comments? I do have a few questions, or rather, clarifications. I was looking at Section 240-4. The hours are from sunrise to sunset. I was comparing it to the old ordinance, which was open to 24-hour fishing. So, now, anyone doing that activity, fishing, do they also follow the dawn-to-dusk rules?
No, fishing is still permitted, but you have to have an appropriate license. So, as long as you're following the Fish and Boat Code and the rules and regulations of the Fish and Boat Commission, the intent was to allow that activity.
Okay.
And I can confirm that in the fishing section.
Okay, good enough. My second question is Motorized Vehicles 240-6. Does this, this would include an e-bike? Is that correct?
It would include anything that would be subject to Title 75. So, interim chief Brown, does an e-bike follow that guideline?
It would depend on the size of the bike. Usually, it's a declaration between a pedicycle and a moped-type vehicle. It has to meet the requirements of certain CCs, but with an electric, with an electric motor, it's a little bit different. So, right now, there's no clarity in Title 75 on that issue, which would make it harder to enforce.
So, those electric bikes you're going to get, that you put Brandon for, those would be allowed in the park? Something similar to what you were looking at?
That's correct. Just to be clear, we're not seeing a problem currently with the e-bikes.
And my next question was, this is all within the park. What happens when that greenway opens? Will there be any restrictions for those electric vehicles on the greenway?
We can, we can evaluate whether that needs to be an issue. I mean, we can, we do have a speed limit essentially, but the question becomes, how do you enforce it, right? So, I think what we would do in that case is see if people are, you know, engaging in behavior that's inappropriate for the trail, and then probably tailor regulations specific to e-bikes. But in speaking with the police department, it is very difficult to enforce a speed limit on a trail. It's not practical or feasible. So, we'd have to look at it a different direction in terms of if it's causing a safety issue in some way.
Okay, thank you. You know, I just, I think of, you know, on boardwalks, the e-bikes can sometimes terrorize pedestrians that are just walking on a boardwalk and just didn't want something to get out of hand with that as well, because they're becoming really popular. The question stems from?
Would it make sense to just kind of have a, we can look at maybe, again, you know, I don't know that we can approach it from a speed limit aspect, but I can, I can see how we can address it so that it's not creating a problem for people that are just walking or running or biking at a normal speed on the trail. Is that something the board would like, you would like to see that incorporated?
Yeah, as long, I mean, e-bikes, I can see people riding their bike, then going on, riding through the park on their e-bike, using the e-bike to get there, and then going through the park. I understand what she's saying about terrorizing people, especially on the boardwalk to the west end, right, where we have that long boardwalk where it's unlimited access, but tricky wording of not discouraging it, but making sure that the pedestrians are...
We can come up with some wording, yes. I'm confident that we can come up with the wording to address that specific situation.
I mentioned earlier, talked to you about the I and J are similar. Do you have that wording for J?
I do. Under fires. So, for fires, no person shall set or cause to be set on fire any tree, woodland, brush, grassland, or meadow, set or cause to be set on fire any material, item, or property within the park system which is not intended for such purposes, to build any fire except within township-owned fireplaces, metal grills, or approved public fire rings using appropriate materials, to use a personally-owned grill, or any similar portable cooking equipment within the park system unless the use of a personally-owned grill, or any similar portable cooking equipment was authorized as part of an approved permit, to dump, sorry, dump, drop, throw, or otherwise scatter lighted matches, ashes, burning cigars, cigarettes, tobacco paper, or other flammable material, and to leave a fire unattended at any time or not fully extinguished before being abandoned within the park system.
So, if somebody has a permit for an overnight camp like Boy Scouts, that's So if somebody has a permit for an overnight camp, like Boy Scouts, let's say, if they want to do a campfire, has to be approved and that has to be mentioned in their permit and then approved by you.
That is correct. And that's the standard we follow right now. It's just this is memorializing that.
I did hear you mentioned about cooking on something, did you say something provided by the township? So would there be certain picnic tables that have a permanently installed grill that they could use?
Not picnic tables, but just grills near adjacent to picnic tables.
Right, but we will have some there.
We do have some, and we discussed adding more.
Okay, so my concern with that is, and another place is doing, how we're going to deal with it, is the charcoals. So what are they going to be told just to leave the charcoal in the grill and then clean it up by Public Works?
That's how we do it now. Some people, I mean, I don't, do you ever see people cleaning it themselves or attempting to?
If they use the pavilion grills, they do just leave it in and then we clean them out.
Yeah, I don't think we ever, yeah, I understand your concern that they'd be trying to haul burning embers and, yeah.
Yeah. The other thing, wading within 100 feet of the, especially the downside part of the dam. I'm not a fisherman. I know they wade closer to that.
Yeah, that's a state law. They're not supposed to be doing that.
Okay. Are we responsible, is that a fishing game?
Fish and Boat Commission.
So they would have to call and Fish and Boat and have them come out and do whatever they need to do. All right. The other thing I had is about tubing. As I mentioned last meeting, right, I know this guy used to like to tube down the Jordan when the water was appropriate, and I understand wearing your PFD, but according to what we're saying now, that would be a prohibited activity.
Right, if you didn't have a permit for the tube, so if you have a kayak, you're issued a permit for that kayak, but to tube, you wouldn't be able to.
So if I wanted to go tubing, or this guy wanted to go tubing, he'd have to come get a permit before he went tubing?
The way it's written now, because the issue becomes, what if 100 people want to go tubing at the same time? And that's when it becomes a problem. One person tubing is not a problem, of course, but the issues we're seeing is if we have a large volume of people tubing or in the water at the same time. That's what we're trying to address.
Well, it's really a safety issue then. We don't have the ability to monitor.
No, we don't, yeah, we don't have lifeguards. We don't have, it's swimming and or wading in the creek at your own risk.
Correct.
But if you have a permit, I mean, a kayaker could go down the creek if the water was high enough.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I think for me, I'm good with the ordinance in its current form. Tom, I want to thank you and all the staff who worked on this. It's been a pretty efficient turnaround from sort of the peak of residents making us aware of this issue. So I want to thank you and staff for your responsiveness and sort of putting this all together. I think, I think overall, these changes are going to be a net positive for the quality of life in the neighborhood and in the park down there. So I think, you know, this gives a lot of good tools to our officers to enforce. Like I said at our last meeting, once it's sort of well-advertised in the park, we're in the later part of this season now, but especially for next season, I think it'll, I think it'll provide a lot of benefits and solve a lot of the issues. The only other thing that was brought up by one of the neighbors at the last meeting, and this, I don't think this would necessarily fall into the ordinance because it's park-specific, but I know we have gates on the playground side of the park preventing cars from going into the parking lot, you know, late at night. But we don't have gates on the other side, and I know that neighbor complained about cars sort of driving into that part of the parking lot late at night. I don't know if that's something Public Works has considered or we could consider. Just making sure that, you know, at night when the park is closed, the parking lots are closed.
Yeah, we've been doing that, actually. We have gates at each parking lot.
Fantastic. They are both, I'm assuming they're both locked.
Yes.
I haven't been down there in a few days, but I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah. Going back to the raft issue, we probably could make it so, you know, there's a reasonable use of it. If you would like, you know, the board's inclined, I could, we could come up with some language to address that, so we're not telling people you can never be in there.
Well, I just see it as, it's a group of people, five, 10 people say, hey, let's, the water's up, let's go for a tube ride down the Jordan. Yeah, okay, right? So they tube down the Jordan and they get to the dam and like, you need a permit for that. I just, I understand what you're saying. If, you know, somebody had, if you write it that, if a group larger than X amount is going to go tubing down the Jordan, I understand the safety issues with that, but at the same time, you have, you know, a group of people who on a day want to go down and have some, you know, family bonding or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I think we could write something that addresses that specific type of situation if the board's inclined for that.
I would be inclined.
Is the board in agreement? Yes. Jacob, are you in agreement with?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. Are there any other board comments? Is there anybody present that has any public comment on this ordinance? Is there anyone online that has any comments or questions?
Yes, I do. This is Dan Booker. I live at 4101 River Road and I have a property at 4109 River Road. And speaking in behalf of a neighbor, Nick Mitstouski, who's also on River Road. Number one, I want to thank the board and Tom Patucci for putting this together, getting these revised rules and regulations together. It does sound like a number of the concerns that I had and the rest of my neighbors seem to be addressed. Couple of comments. I've been kind of dealing with this problem down in the park for the last number of years, five-plus years. Made a number of complaints to the police department and the police were unable to enforce anything. It sounds like now they're going to be able to enforce the regulations with warnings and citations. This last week, things were great when the signs went up about two weeks ago. The noise in the park, I mean, the gathering of people in the creek went down this last week on Sunday. People were walking right past the signs, setting up tents in the creek, building little dams across the dam of the water so they could swim in a little bit deeper water, still diving off the roots of the trees at the rope swing. They just ignored the signage that was up there. Just want to be sure that when the signage goes up, that the police will enforce those regulations.
Yes, that's the intent of the, that's the intent of the ordinance. Right now, we've been informing them of that and leaving.
And again, the biggest complaint that I have, because I'm right above, I'm right behind a lime kiln, which is right in front of where these, the swimming seems to be gathering. I mean, of all the places in the park, it's like every night, it's there. People, the greenway goes right past there. I went down the other night before I called the police and people walking by are wondering what in the heck kind of a party's going on down in the creek because of the loud music and the screaming and the yelling and just the stuff I've been complaining about for years. I'm hoping that that situation is going to be addressed with the loud noise. I mean, my home is 300, 400 feet away and it's clear as day on my back porch when they start playing their boomboxes down there. So I just want to be sure that there's enough in that revised rules and regulations that the noise from the park, like in any other neighbor, and according to the noise ordinance, stays under property. I'm a neighbor to the park and the park's my neighbor, and I just expect that kind of consideration. That's all I have to comment on.
Very good. Thank you for sharing your observations as a neighbor to the park with this board, and we have taken note of your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to comment on this agenda item? So Tom, based on the comments from the board as well as this resident, do you have further?
No, I can articulate the motions if the board would like.
Sure.
All right. So the first motion would be to incorporate the following revisions, so to add language confirming that the closure of the park, entering the park after it's closed during emergency closures or other closures is a violation would constitute trespassing. To confirm that fishing is permitted after hours, we are also going to add language to address e-bikes where it is interfering with pedestrians and the multi-use trail. And we're going to add language for tubing to allow for small groups to utilize tubes and other similar type items.
Will those groups for the tubing need permits?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Very good.
That would be the first motion.
Very good. There's a motion on the floor. Do we have?
No, I'm sorry. I was just articulating, someone then would have to make the motion.
Someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Off of the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, so the second motion would be to send the draft ordinance to the township solicitor for legal review after those revisions are incorporated.
In the revisions, does, have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Finally, the motion would be to advertise the ordinance, provided that the solicitor's comments do not substantively alter the intent of the ordinance.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And item 7B, we have an ordinance amending Chapter 336 Vehicles and Traffic of the Codified Ordinances of the Township of South Whitehall to provide for an additional parking zone for persons with disabilities and disabled veterans, and to provide for severability, retention of rights to enforce, repealer, and an effective date. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. Township administration is respectfully asking to amend the code to allow for two parking spaces at the Westwood Heights Swim Club, which is located at 1144 North 38th Street. The reason for this request is to allow handicap members easier access to the facility. There's currently no access for handicap members. We've provided a map where those signs would be installed. We have the signage in stock, and the approval was previously received from the Board of Commissioners to move forward with advertising the ordinance. It was advertised in the July 10th issue of the Parkland Press and sent to the Lehigh County Department of Law on July 5th. It's now ready for adoption. If the board is okay with everything, we would seek a motion to adopt the ordinance at this time.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions? Is there any public comment? Anything online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said ordinance amending Chapter 336, Article 4, Handicap Parking Space? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And item 7C, an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 2, General Legislation, Chapter 304, Streets and Sidewalks to add a new Article 5 entitled Snow, Ice, and Sleet Removal to the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township, and further providing for removal of snow, ice, and sleet from sidewalks, restricting the depositing of snow, enforcement and violation ticket appeals process, fines, and penalties, providing for the removal from the Codified Ordinances of Chapter 148 Conduct, Section 148-1A5, Chapter 155 Drug Paraphernalia in its entirety, and then Chapter 221 Lording in its entirety, repealer, failure to enforce on a waiver, severability, and effective date. Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. So it was previously discovered that the Code of Ordinances of the Township does not include a specific standalone ordinance that addresses the timely removal of snow and ice from the sidewalks located in the township. So in order to address that, as previously discussed with the board, a standalone ordinance was developed and was sent to the township solicitor for review. The township solicitor had comments, those comments were incorporated. To summarize the key provisions of this ordinance, so the purpose and intent is that we want to ensure that snow, ice, and sleet does not create a hazardous condition for the traveling public, requires snow and ice to be removed no later than 24 hours after the cessation of the snowstorm or weather event which causes the buildup of snow or ice on the sidewalk. We didn't provide a specific date range, for example, like, you know, December to April because there's times when there could be snow or ice outside of that. Snow and/or ice shall be removed from the sidewalk for the entire width and the entire length of the sidewalk on or fronting the property, requires the use of melting or attraction agent in those instances when snow is compacted and created a slippery icy surface, requires fire hydrants to be clear of snow, requires ADA ramps, sidewalks, and lantabust stops to be clear of snow, prohibits snow and ice from being thrown on public streets, prohibits snow and ice accumulation to block stormwater drainage systems, provides for an enforcement process including tickets and an appeal process. And we also cleaned up a part of the code that related to depositing of snow and ice, which is now addressed in this new ordinance. And we removed two parts of the code not related to snow and ice for loitering and drug paraphernalia, as those are no longer used by the police department. They use state regulations for those. The solicitor did review and the comments that were taken and incorporated was, again, specified removal of a specific date range. The code enforcement officer can now issue tickets without previous warnings under this current language. Clarifies that the first violation is $50 and any subsequent offense is $100, with a $10 penalty if the ticket is not paid or appealed within a specified period of 10 days. And it clarifies that those persons and entities that have been issued a ticket have 20 days to pay the ticket in order to avoid the filing of a citation. Providing the Board of Commissioners is in agreement with the language of the ordinance, I would seek a motion to advertise it as submitted. And to be clarified, we will provide literature in the form of informational graphics and so forth in the next e-newsletter and put it on the township website so that people are aware of this provision before the snow season.
Very good, Tom. Thank you. One question I have, thank you for the notice to residents through the newsletter and the township website. I would also ask if it's possible to utilize our utility bills to notify, not everyone has email and access to the website. I've heard that from a number of residents, and if there's a way that we could incorporate that.
Yes, we could try to get the first quarter of '25.
Very good. I'll open it up to the board for questions on this draft ordinance.
I do have a quick comment. I want to thank you, Commissioner Kelly, for bringing up the fact that not everybody has the email access. So putting it into a bill, I completely agree with that. Thank you for that. Also, I'm looking at 30446E. Each day a violation continues or is permitted to continue may constitute a separate offense. Does that mean that every day that the removal is not implemented, they could incur a fine every day?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would the township, Tom, have a list of organizations that could help elderly or somebody has a knee replacement, can't get out to shovel the snow or something that could possibly do it as a public service for residents?
We could try to get the information on that. I don't know what that is.
I don't, I'm all I'm thinking of, you know, the person can't. All I'm thinking of, you know, the person can't clear his snow because he had surgery or whatever, can't get out to do it within a timeframe. You know, is there a way for them to seek, you know, call up, say, hey, can't get it, can't get it done?
I'm not aware of any entity. I can find out. I don't know. Chief Brown, do you know of any entity that would assist?
We'll have to look into it. Typically, if we run into those situations, somebody is taking care of it, either a neighbor or police officers have handled it before.
Right. So, before we go out and start finding somebody who's physically incapable of doing it, could we help them somehow, whether it's ask a neighbor or we find them?
Typically, our code enforcement officer's approach is to try to, try to work through it without issuing tickets. So, I would imagine we could follow that process here to the maximum extent possible.
That's a good question. And just as a follow-up, so, would you envision if there was a complaint at a particular home, the code enforcement officer would knock on the door, see if someone's home, and if there is an issue, would certainly work with the resident?
That would be our goal.
Be the goal.
That would be the goal. You know, we, we're not, I would envision a warning system. You know, you don't have to go straight to a ticket.
I think that would make sense.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with Chris, but my concern is the fire hydrants. Some of these people aren't going to clean. I think Herb, you say Public Works is not part of their process, correct?
No, it is not part of our process. It is technically for the homeowner to clear the fire hydrants, yes. I know the one big storm, we did go around with a backhoe after we had everything cleaned up.
Right.
We didn't unbury every single one, but we made sure there was ones in certain vicinity that were cleaned out.
Well, that language is included in this draft ordinance, that the property owner is responsible?
Yes, yes, it is, for fire hydrants.
In front of a hydrant if it's in their right-of-way.
Yes. And we, for the question about, you know, organizations, we can certainly try to find that. I just, I, off the cuff, I'm not aware of any. We can, we can research it further.
Clean team.
Is that, is that a real thing?
Yeah, it's a real thing.
Okay.
Allentown, the Clean Team, I think.
Chief Brown?
I've seen him in other areas too, outside of Allentown.
I used to get a call from Magistrate Hammond every once in a while. If somebody has public service hours, they have to do. Does he still use that, do you know, off the top of your head?
I know there are, sometimes he does use that as a, as a punishment or.
Public service.
Yeah, public service, but yeah, instead of a fine. But yes, I can check with him again.
Commissioner Johns mentioned the Clean Team. I believe those are residents of the Allentown Rescue Mission. And residents can hire them to come out and take care of chores around the home. I believe that's how that works.
I think that's, I think you're right, Joe.
Any other board comments? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Is there anything online? Do I have a motion to proceed with advertising of said ordinance amending part two, chapter 304?
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Commissioner Roth, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. We have a motion and a second to proceed with advertising said ordinance for the snow removal.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you able to vote?
Yes, aye.
Aye, very good. Motion carries five to zero. Do I need a second motion for?
No.
Legal review? Okay.
Legal review has already been done.
Good, very good. Agenda item eight A, we have a resolution granting final approval to a major plan entitled Ridge Farms Phase 1C. And I'll turn it over to our long-range planner, Chris Stroller.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. This is an application to develop the property located at pin number 548746422139, located directly west of the Buckman Street Roosevelt Street intersection and directly north and northwest of the Knesseth Israel Cemetery. The plan proposes 34 two-unit dwellings, 17 pairs of twins, Granary Lane, Grisma Lane, and a continuation of Buckman Street, active open space number five, and basins number eight and nine, and associated stormwater management facilities on approximately 6.8 acre portion of the 123 acre tract. The property is zoned R4 medium-density residential and TND residential cluster overlay district and is being developed as a TND residential cluster overlay. Kay Walbert LLC is the equitable owner and applicant, and I believe the applicant is here tonight. As an overview, previous consideration for this at the October 21st, 2021 meeting of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended conditional preliminary, preliminary plan approval of the major plan for Ridge Farms. At the November 3rd, 2021 meeting, the Board of Commissioners approved preliminary plan approval for the major plan of Ridge Farm. And at the December 22nd, December 15th, 2022 meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed and took under advisement major plan 2017 101 Ridge Farm Phase 1C, which we were talking about tonight. The Planning Commission's action at the June 13th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, Ridge Farm Phase 1C was recommended for approval subject to 30 conditions. These conditions have been incorporated into the draft approving resolution. During the June 13th, 2024 meeting, concerns were raised regarding the configuration of the continuation of Buckman Street to connect the proposed development to the existing street network. Specific concerns included proposed configuration of two indented parking spaces for the adjacent property owner was not permitted by zoning and would require relief. And the second consideration was lack of pedestrian connectivity to the existing street network. An agreement between the applicant and the adjacent property owner included on-street parking for a minimum of two vehicles along the Buckman Street frontage. The improvements, as stated in the agreement, are subject to the review and approval by South Whitehall Township. Understanding the rationale for the request, the Planning Commission recommended revisions to the plan presented at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission recommendation has been memorialized in the following condition: That the applicant shall, to the satisfaction of the township engineer and staff, modify the design of Buckman Street between the Roosevelt Street intersection and the intersection with Cottage Lane, Grisma Lane, to remove the indented parking, improve traffic flow, provide sidewalk, and make recommendations for no parking signage. The applicant has proposed an alternative configuration, as you can see below, the township engineer and staff to review. The above plan was distributed to Public Works Fire Marshal, zoning officer, and the township engineer. The above plan and attached exhibits have all, have addressed all concerns other than the waiver for sidewalk width and minor comments from the township engineer that you can see in the waiver and deferral section. While these questions and concerns are typically handled at the Planning Commission prior to final plan approval at the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commission explicitly directed the applicant to work with the township engineer and staff to modify the design. Township staff and engineer find the proposed configuration acceptable. With the approval of Buckman Street waiver, the condition shall be considered satisfied. So, tonight, the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners with the inclusion of the conditions addressing township staff and engineer concerns in the draft approving resolution, staff has no objection to the final approval of Ridge Farms Phase 1C. The following actions are for the Board of Commissioners' consideration and are reflected in the attached resolution. So, there are three actions this evening. The first being a motion approving a waiver of SALDO Section 31235B3D to allow for four-foot sidewalks along Buckman Street. Second action would be a motion approving a waiver of Streets and Sidewalk Ordinances, section 30427, to allow for a permit to be issued for the road opening of a portion of Roosevelt, Dawes, Buckman, and North Filbert Streets. And then finally, the adoption of the approving resolution. The Board of Commissioners has until August 29th of 2024 to act upon this plan. I will allow the applicant, if they'd like to make a presentation, to the board to come up, and I'll quickly go over the two waivers for consideration. The first waiver is the Buckman Street Extension Waiver. As mentioned in the Township Engineers' letter dated July 29th in 2024, the following waivers are required for the proposed configuration of the Buckman Street extension. SALDO Section 31235B3D requirement of a local street to be in accordance with Township standard construction documents, a five-foot, six-inch grass strip between curb and sidewalk and a five-foot sidewalk. We note that the current plan shows no grass strip between curb and sidewalk and a four-foot sidewalk on only south side of Buckman Street. It is the township staff and engineer's opinion that granting the, that granting of this waiver is appropriate to accomplish the Planning Commission condition to provide sidewalk and due to the limited width of right-of-way. The four-foot width of the wide, of the sidewalk meets ADA requirements for sidewalk width. The second waiver to consider is the waiver of portions of Roosevelt Street, Dawes Street, Buckman Street, and North Filbert Street. A waiver from Streets and Sidewalks Ordinance, Chapter 304, Article 3, Street Excavations, Sections 30427A, Restrictions and Opening a New Street, is requested by the applicant to allow a permit to be issued by the township, which would allow an opening in a portion of Roosevelt, Dawes, Buckman, and North Filbert Streets, which have been paved within the past five years. The comments from Community Development Department, the waiver is subject to BOC approval because it is not part of subdivision and land development or zoning ordinances. The Department of Public Works recommendations should be followed, and there are comments in your packet. If the applicant would like to make a presentation and the board can take action on the initial waivers and then ultimately the resolution.
Very good. Thank you. Before the applicant makes any presentation, I would like to ask our township engineer, Tony Talariata, to update the board on any engineering comments you have on this plan and the waivers.
Thank you. A lot of information there. It was a thoroughly reviewed project. The development itself, 34 units, as was mentioned, was reviewed and approved in preliminary plan before. It was thoroughly reviewed by the Planning Commission. Now, this Buckman Street was under a lot of scrutiny. I think that what township staff and our office came up with is they're providing sidewalk to leave the development. So, any kids, 34 units, any kids that have to go to the bus stop, which is on the, on Buckman Street, on the east side of Roosevelt, they are provided sidewalk. There was a 40-foot right-of-way that was granted. That was an agreement between a few property owners, since that was an unopened alley. So, our office and staff did the best they can to get everything per ordinance. The applicant provided everything except for the sidewalk width. They just couldn't do it based upon the existing conditions. There's some trees. There's some grading necessary on the property owners adjacent to that. They provided a four-foot sidewalk, which does meet ADA. So, while it doesn't meet Township standards, it's a one-foot difference. I think at this point, we can recommend that waiver. Second waiver, I can defer to her, but it has to do with, since there was just pavement, they just paved Buckman Street. They agreed, the applicant agreed to, when they cut open the trench, to pave edge to edge, to top it edge to edge, which doesn't create a seam, which kind of keeps the integrity of the road longer. So, I guess, based upon some of Herb's comments in that agreement, we have no objection either. So, at this point, our recommendation, we can recommend engineer approval based upon the minimal comments that we have left.
Very good. Thank you. And I'll also ask our township solicitor, attorney Zader, if you have any legal comments for the board.
I have no legal concerns with the application or the potential approval by the board.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, I'll open up to the board. If there are questions, I don't know if we need to hear a presentation for the board would like to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, the concern with the sidewalks is on the south side of Buckman, there's going to be no parking signs if I heard that correct. So, the kids are walking by there, and there's no way to put a two-foot buffer between the curb and the sidewalk to at least give them some protection in case of an errant vehicle?
We would love to. I think that if you do the math, there it's two 11-foot lanes plus eight feet. That's 30 feet on the one side. Then you add in the four-foot sidewalk, there's only two to three feet. We tried to widen it. They actually go to a five-foot sidewalk near the stop bar. And the reason for that is because they want to get that stop sign out of the cartway. So, they're really squeezed. And we did look through the grading plan. I think you can see they're dealing with a higher elevation of a property on the north side and a lower on the south side. So, while we, we tried, the engineers went back and forth as good as they could. You can see that I think there's only one foot from the face of curb to the northern property line, and I think two on the south side to the right-of-way. It's only a 40-foot right-of-way. That was granted by those two property owners. We understand your concerns. There's a curb there to block in addition to the four-foot sidewalk, and realistically, that is, we don't foresee that being as fast, a fast section of road. It's 200 feet.
It's not that. It's somebody has a medical emergency, hits the gas instead of brakes, and bad things happen.
100%. No, I agree with you. We did, but we.
Okay, that's fine. The other thing, I was looking through on the traffic, and it said about how it goes to the, from Huckleberry to 22 and all of those stuff. But my concern is going out Filbert onto Huckleberry and the site triangle there to see traffic coming east on Huckleberry, and as I try to pull out, to go up Huckleberry to avoid as much of Cedar Crest as I can. Is there, did you look at that or?
In terms of all-site improvements for that site triangle, I believe there's a lot of, a lot of verbiage in the MPC that it's hard to get developers to fix problems off-site. Joe can talk to that, but I think that would be an off-site improvement. Their traffic generation for this part of the development, while I know that there's a large development, the traffic generation doesn't meet any criteria for off-site improvements to any of the surrounding areas, unfortunately.
Thanks.
So, I have a question about paving, and maybe the applicant can answer my question. When you, when those utilities and easements are constructed, what is the timeframe that you will perform the paving? It's all finished? Is there a certain timeframe that you will perform that paving? Does that make sense? Am I making sense? I just don't want it to drag on for years and years, and it's not being paved. It's not being paved. What is your plan for that, for finishing that road?
The utilities will have to go in early on in the, in the process.
Right.
So, you know, we'll meet the township ordinance requirements, and we'll work with Herb on that. I don't know if Herb, is there a specific timeframe for paving? I kind of have a relic recollection of what the timeline is.
There, there's not, there is a timeline. I don't remember right off the top of my head how long it is. But there is certain times that they have to deal with temperatures and stuff like that also.
Yeah, when there's an existing road, when you're, when you're, you know, excavating into an existing road, the time period is 120 days.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Roth, do you have any questions?
Nothing beyond what's already been asked and answered.
Very good. Are there any public comments? Is there anyone online who would like to comment on this agenda item?
Not that I'm seeing.
Very good. One last ask of the board, if there are any further comments before a call.
Oh, yeah, everything meets ADA approval, right?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, they, they're conditioned. We're going to get final plans, but before it gets recorded, it will meet ADA.
Okay, that's my concern.
Very good. So, we have three motions to consider this evening. The first is the motion to grant the sidewalk waiver. Do I have a motion? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We have a motion to grant the road opening. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. I need a motion to adopt said resolution granting preliminary final approval to plan Ridge Farm Phase 1C.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five to zero. Very good. Good luck with your plan. And I want to thank township staff for working on those outside issues with, that the Planning Commission sent over. Thank you for doing that. And item eight B, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan. And item eight B, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Parkland Operations Center. And I'll again ask Chris Stroller, Long Range Planner, to please present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. This is an application to further develop the property at two, six, one, nine Stadium Drive. The plan proposes a twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty two square foot addition to the second floor of the new operations center, building on the eight point seven acre parcel. The property is served by public water and is zoned rural residential, too. Parkland School District is the owner and applicant. Previous township consideration at the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four hearing, the zoning hearing board granted a hundred space variance to the off-street parking requirement with four conditions through appeal number two, zero, two, three, zero, zero dash, zero, seven. At the April nineteenth, twenty twenty three meeting, the Board of Commissioners through Resolution twenty twenty three fifty six approved Parkland School District New Operations Center Major Plan, an application proposing to raise the existing structure and construct a two-story building on the parcel. At the June thirteenth, twenty twenty four, the planning commission recommended final plan approval, subject to eleven conditions, which are in your packet. The planning commission determined that nine waivers were appropriate and two deferrals would be appropriate. Two deferrals are as follows. The applicant has requested requirement of Section three, twelve, twenty six A of the subdivision land development ordinance require indication of the plan and construction of all required public improvements along the frontage of Lime Kiln Road to be waived, and the planning commission is persuaded that a deferral would be appropriate until such time that the Board of Commissioners deem the improvements necessary. The second waiver is the applicant has requested the requirement of Section three, twelve, thirty five B of Saldow pertaining to the requirement to construct street right-of-way improvements along Lime Kiln Road be waived, and the planning commission is persuaded that a deferral would be appropriate until such time the Board of Commissioners deems improvements necessary. The applicant is here tonight, and the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, Township Staff recommends preliminary final approval for Parkland School District New Operations Center Phase three, Plan twenty twenty four, one oh one. The Board of Commissioners' deadline to act on this plan is November fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to go ahead and please ask our township engineer, Tony Talarida, again for any engineering comments for the board.
This is Phase three, which is just a building expansion, about twelve thousand additional square foot to a site that was approved and being built. Our main concern was the additional traffic generated by this building. An analysis was done, not only at three oh nine and Lime Kiln, but also at Lime Kiln and Stadium. They were close to meeting left turn lane warrants. This just put them over left turn lane warrants. What that means is based upon just generic volumes, there's a potential for needing left turn lane. They did an analysis of the intersection to show that it still meets level service A. So at this point, we agree with the condition to allow the township to continue monitoring this. And if at any time there's problems, they can go back to the school district. The other thing is, as some people know, there was, there's a few master plans in the works for this school. Now, in moving forward, they probably will be analyzing this intersection as well as all the surrounding intersections in the near future. And there will probably be major changes. Well, there'll be change, potential changes to these intersections. So at this point, we'll feel comfortable finalizing this building, knowing that there'll be more development coming.
Very good. Thank you, Tony. And I'll call on our township solicitor, attorney Zader. Any comment on this plan?
Commissioner Kelly, I have no legal concerns with the board granting approval if you would see fit to do that this evening.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions on this plan.
So they are required to have a hundred parking spots, and they're only going to have how many?
They're required to have a hundred and ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
And the zoning hearing board granted relief to have ninety-four spaces. And Tom, is there, how will the township monitor?
I spoke with the zoning officer, Laura Harrier, and she indicated the best method of doing that would be to simply request current employee list from the from the school district of all those employees that will be utilizing that building and then reconciling that with the expected visitor tally on a regular basis. And then also to continue to monitor, see if there's any like identifying factors for problems. For example, if people are parking along areas they shouldn't be parking or, you know, crossing the road from 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 the other building across the street, right? Like those things of that nature. So there's ways to do it. And then I think the zoning decision was was clear that if it's determined that there there's not sufficient parking, they would have, you know, we, we as the township have the right to go back on them.
Very good, thank you.
Can we ask the applicant, with this building, you took up a lot of your parking for the football games? So what is your plan to accommodate those lost spots for those Friday nights where you get eight to ten thousand people in the stadium?
Yeah, I think we discussed this a bit when we were here last year with the original application that this this will be used, and we have sidewalks that and crosswalks that are in there. So this this lot will be used on Friday night for for the parking for the for the stadium as well.
Well, I understand that, but it used to be a field that people parked in, the whole field. So you lost all of those spots. So where are those cars going to go?
Well, I mean, there's still, there's still going to be ninety-six spots on on the, you know, there's going to be, I believe, seventy-six spots that are permanently striped. And then we have additional spots that can be used as overflow, which during the during the workday can be used for tractor trailers and loading and things of that nature. But on on football nights, they can be, that lower lot can be parked as well.
That's my concern, because you you took a lot, which I understand, you know, those five Fridays that you you fill up the football stadium, there's a lot of cars there. And you took a lot of spots away from where people were parking, more than ninety-three that you're providing. My concern is where are those people going to park? And is it going to end up being parked along Lime Kiln and walking up up the street to go to the stadium? Or will the overflow end up going out on Orfield Road, creating a bitter bigger hazard because there's no sidewalks on the Terrace Road or Stadium Drive, whatever that connecting road is to Stadium Road and Orfield Road? Like what, it just doesn't sound like you have a plan to deal with parking. It's going to be a free-for-all. And then those people that come from out of town that aren't familiar with it could cause us a bigger problem on those Friday nights.
We understand that, and the school district has actually directed us to look to see if there's a way to increase the amount of parking on the site. We're studying that right now, but we feel that.
I didn't catch your name.
Scott McMacken with Cowan Associates, and that's the civil engineer for the project.
I thought you were a Parkland employee.
I'm sorry.
So you would understand that Friday night football games in the field where you built the building becomes a prime parking spot for those games. And then now that you've taken away a couple hundred spots, like those cars still need to park somewhere. And my concern is where are they going to go and how are they safely going to make it up to the stadium? Is is what, it doesn't sound like there's, it's going to be a free-for-all. And I've seen bad things happen when out-of-towners come and park and want to get to the stadium and cause accidents.
Understood. And and, you know, I'm not hundred percent sure how many parking spaces were, you know, taken up in the grass. Maybe more than the ninety-six are being proposed now. We are working currently, there's a large P P N L right-of-way that runs through the property. That was some of the original limitations for how much we could put on that on that parcel formally. We are currently working to see if we can get some, work with them and maybe get some additional parking underneath their their right-of-way to see they would permit that, and we can possibly get some more parking on that lot. But as it stands now, you know, it, you know, we're maximizing what we can in the limits of the ordinance to provide as much parking as possible for not only, you know, the use during the the work week, but to try to maximize the parking for for those football Fridays. Because, you know, that was a discussion when we first started designing the project. And when we came in with the original project back in two thousand two and three, we, you know, we had discussions about trying to maximize that parking as well.
Okay, Tom, I don't know if this would fall under a special event plan, but with the size of the number of people that are attending football games, that parking and access to the stadium is a concern. And maybe we should proactively meet with emergency services, the school district, and see how we can make sure that we avoid any potential problems. Because like I said, I I have firsthand seen bad outcomes from people coming from out of town to get to the game that caused the problem.
I've seen it. Hit there.
Chris, if, can you guys hear me?
We can, Commissioner Roth.
Yeah, if I just want to sort of build on to what Chris is saying. I, when the district came before the board last year, I had, I was very skeptical in the same way I think that you are of of the ability to fit all those cars up there on a Friday night. I really doubted that it would happen. Be disastrous. I will say that having ended most of the home games this past season, the district did a pretty good job moving all buses out of the way across Stadium Drive, up by the bus garage. They made a lot of parking. Now, I I hope that continues even after this project's done, because I know they had that whole area fenced off. I think in the long term, parking is going to be a big problem up there, and I still have the same concerns that Chris, that you have. But I will say that, at least for the past season, the district did a pretty good job of making sure, you know, there was enough parking, and they had a lot of parking attendants there helping to guide people. So I hope that would continue on the part of the school district, at least this season, and hopefully well into the future. Because otherwise, it could be a serious problem.
Hi, Arthur Oaks, Director of Operations for Parkland. So yes, that will continue. That is our our practice and procedure to help offset some of the parking that we know we're losing. As Scott mentioned, we are trying to add that additional parking with underneath of the power lines. And also, I think Tony mentioned about the master plans, all the things we're trying to do. We're trying to develop that site a little more. We're trying to purchase a property, you know, the old quarry set up there. So all of that would be to move the bus parking up there. That would open up more parking within the parking lot. We call it Vision twenty thirty in Parkland. It's out there in the public. It's been at the board meetings. We don't have the plans yet to show you, but within these next couple of years, we think that we're going to address all of those situations and those issues. In the short term, we're going to do all of the things that he mentioned about moving the buses, trying to open it up as much as we can, keep that parking lot open as much as we can. This is coming online, so this is really our first season with that fully under construction. So we're going to have more people on staff. We're going to get all the buses up out of the out of that area. If we have to park them in another building, that's what we'll do, whatever we have to do to make it work. We have a safety and security doctor in Racco on on staff who works very well with the township police. So whatever we have to do, we're going to figure it out.
Yeah, I'd just like to see us kind of be proactive on the plans or something like, when if Easton comes to town and Nazareth comes to town, there's ten thousand people in the stadium.
Yeah, Nazareth is usually our biggest.
Yeah.
And we can get in touch with you, Tom, and.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, and that would be the, with Tony and Racco would be the primary contact for that. We can arrange for that and emergency management and public works and police, and we can review everything.
Just so we have a plan to, like I said, just.
Yeah, I think I think the event itself falls under their use. So, you know, we we be able to work through them like we do with other issues.
The pirate, the talk of.
Well, no, it's very good discussion, and and thank you, Commissioner Paichel, for bringing that up. And thank you to to Tom and to the district to partner together, get a plan for safety in.
Yeah, it's a partnership.
Absolutely. So other comments on this plan?
You have a quick comment. I'm also thinking along the night, the nights that there are football games and knowing how crowded it is and having three children gone through Parkland High School. I understand that you don't want any traffic going left on Lime Kiln, going east, I guess that would be, right? I have a concern with west on Lime Kiln because I know how those kids spill out of the stadium, and they want to go to Burger King, and they meet and they hang out with their friends, and that's great. But I want, in time, I want it to be thought about like a safe sidewalk, a safe area for these kids to to go down and trickle across to that restaurant. And I understand that with the improvements of that intersection, that that will all be tying in. But I just want to make sure that you knew that I had that concern.
Yeah, I think that'll actually be in the next thing that we bring forward when we talk about Orfield as a school as a whole.
Proactively putting sidewalks on the north side of Lime Kiln below the lower lot.
And who knows what they're going to require us? I know we met with PennDOT about those improvements, so whatever's going to be required, we're going to have to do.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. But we do think that the new operations building with those sidewalks up that road are going to help a lot as well. That makes a big improvements. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Roth, did you have any comments on the plan?
Nothing further, no.
Very good. Is there any public comment? Was there anyone online with any comment? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving and adopting revised? I'm sorry, motion to adopt said resolution granting preliminary final approval to Plan Parkland Operations Center.
Motion.
I'll second on favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Good luck with your plan. Agenda item eight C, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southwest Hall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving and adopting revised bylaws of the Public Safety Commission. Tom, if you would please present.
Thank you. So during the Monday, July first, Public Safety Commission meeting, possible revisions to the adopted bylaws of the Public Safety Commission were discussed by the commission members. So the two possible revisions that were discussed were under Article five, Membership Section one. So to remove the voting authority of the Parkland School District Superintendent pursuant to a request made by the Parkland School District. I want to make sure we clarify that. So this request was subsequently subsequently discussed with the Parkland School District Attorney, Dr. Madison, and it is confirmed that the sentiment of Parkland School District is that the amendment would be appropriate to remove the voting authority of the superintendent. The superintendent or his or her designee should still be a member of the Public Safety Commission and have the right to participate in any discussions. For general information, Tony Noreco is the Director of District Safety and Security for Parkland School District. Has been attending Public Safety Commission meetings on behalf of the district on a regular basis. The Second Amendment was to Article four, Policy Section three, which requires the Public Safety Commission members to render recommendations concerning subdivision plans before the commission pursuant to a fifty-one percent affirmative vote. The Public Safety Commission had discussed providing a list of all discussed comments, regardless of whether a majority vote was approved. So upon review of that suggestion with township staff, it was noted that the revision would essentially require the remittance of any and all comments received from the members without receiving an overall recommendation as a whole. The recommendation from staff is to keep the language of the bylaws as currently drafted, and then specifically list the need memorialized within the motion of recommendation on each subdivision with all comments that the group as a whole decides to incorporate for the consideration of of other agencies, including the Prime Commission and the Board of Commissioners. So at this past Monday night's, August fifth, Public Safety Commission, that omission of one of their recommended revisions was discussed, and it was agreed upon that that is the appropriate course of action. The the situation is that the comments are fluid during the meeting. But, you know, as a whole, the the motion should encapsulate what the overall recommendations are. So meaning, you want to have a fluid discussion, but then make sure you're you're incorporating the most important comments that the group decides on. So so no recommended revisions there. Also, this past Monday night, it was discussed that whether the term for at-large member should be amended from two years to four years. So to clarify, there's permanent members of the Public Safety Commission. So there's, and then there's four at-large members. So there's eight permanent, and those include. So there's eight permanent, and those include the Chief of the Four Fire Company Service serving the township, Chief Executive Officer of the Ambulance Corps serving the township, Chief of Police, Emergency Management Director, and the Superintendent of Parkland School District. So the four at-large would, if you were inclined to change the term, could be done via this bylaws revision as well, so you'd go from two to four.
Very good, Tom. Thank you for presenting. I will open it up to the board for any comments or questions on the agenda item. For the board's consideration, is there agreement to have the at-large members of a two- or a four-year term? Is there a preference of the board?
I prefer four.
I think four is appropriate, the amount of time that it takes for this board to review, interview members. It would be consistent with all of our other advisory boards. That's typically what our terms are. Would agree that it would be four, also being consistent with our other boards. And would they be staggered?
They're currently staggered, because you have to stagger them when they're appointed. So by adding two more years to already two, you would just be keeping the built-in staggering.
Okay, perfect. So the at-large members, I'm wondering, are they expired terms at this point?
Some are, some are not.
Okay, so the ones that are expired would be going through our process to fill out an intent to.
And we've sent out the application that's required to all the expired terms.
Okay, so the board will be reviewing those at some point in the future. Very good. I'm in agreement. I appreciate you bringing this to the board to update the bylaws and to have a concise message of the items discussed for land development brought to both the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. So I'd be in agreement with this as well. Is there any other comment or questions at this time from the board? Commissioner Roth, do you have any comment?
Nothing further. I'm fine with four years as well.
Very good. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Is there anything online, Chris? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving and adopting revised bylaws of the Public Safety Commission? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Also have a second motion confirming the revision to Article 5, Section 1, for the term from two years to four, to incorporate that into the resolution.
Do we have a motion to incorporate that into the resolution?
A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Then item 9A, we have a motion to proceed with release of security for Ridge Farms, Phase 1A Improvement Security Release Certification Number 7. Tom, if you'd present.
Okay, so for Phase 1A, this is the number seven of the certification. So if the board will recall, this project was originally approved at the April 6, 2022 meeting through Resolution 202248. Over 3 million in security improvements were secured via a letter of credit, a letter of credit. The plan was recorded on July 5, 2023, and construction started shortly thereafter. Words. At this time, the applicant has completed more of the required public infrastructure improvements and has requested a seventh release of security for those improvements. The Township Engineers Office and Staff conducted inspections to confirm and document the construction of the required improvements and are authorizing the release of $317,985.42. This would bring the value of the total amount of security releases $2,375,270.10. And it is important to note that the township has elected to impose an additional 10% security amount as permitted by the municipality's planning code. The detailed documentation supporting the release was provided to the board members and is included in the packet. Unless there's any questions, I would seek a motion to authorize the township manager to sign the security release letter to the financial institution and confirm the additional 10% security amount requested by the township.
Thank you, Tom. And I will ask our township engineer if you have any comments on this release.
No, minor. There's like $1.2 million still being held by the township. We know there would probably be only one or two of these left because we never released more than was required for maintenance, which is over 200,000. So you might only get one or two of these left until they kind of draw down to that final close. So as we have been through, pretty standard forms.
Very good, thank you. Are there any board comments or questions? Is there any public comment? Anything online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to authorize a township manager to sign the security release letter to the financial institution and confirm the additional 10% security amount requested by the township? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Then item 9B, we have a motion authorizing township manager to write off fees in the amount of $6,514.15 in reference to Hamilton Animal Care, 4570 West Tillman Street. And Tom, if you'd present.
Yes, the property located at 4570 West Tillman Street was the construction of a 9,600 square foot two-story veterinarian facility, which consisted of an 8,157 square foot office and a 1,443 square foot general retail space, as well as a 46 space parking lot on the parcel. Project was approved by the board on April 5, 2017. Final certificate of occupancy was issued April 22, 2019. The 18-month maintenance period officially ended March 31, 2022. November 2022 closeout procedure was started. There still remains a shortfall of $6,514.15 in the escrow account. The township manager ordinance allows write-offs of $2,500. This exceeds that amount. The $6,514.15 figure represents a good faith attempt of township to reconcile amounts that were billed to the applicant and developer for this project as a result of the necessary relocation of PPL utility poles. That was due to the approval of another subdivision, KRE, that required sidewalk infrastructure improvement. So that's the reason this is being requested to be written off. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a request before you.
Very good, thank you for that presentation. Are there any board comments or questions on this motion? Is there any public comment or anyone online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Commissioner Roth? Very good, thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Then item 9C, we have a motion to proceed with purchase of entry exit gate for the police public works area. Intern Chief Brown, if you'd please present.
Yes, the police department and township administration are requesting to upgrade the entry exit gate utilized to gain access to the police department and public works. The gate no longer functions properly and enables anyone to drive down to the back of the township building where township employees are getting in and out of vehicles or working in the public works garage. Recently, we had two incidents where motors drove down there. They were arguing, they got out of the car. This is identified safety concern as public works personnel are often working with the garage doors open in the summertime, exposing them to what could be a dangerous scenario if no police officers are available on site and an argument escalates. The original gate was supposed to prevent unauthorized persons from entering the municipal complex unless they were let inside. The original motor of the gate was not correctly specified, thereby resulting in frequent interruptions of service. The cost of this gate includes all material and labor to install it. The quotation provided utilizes CoStar's contract pricing as the procurement method. During the course of the 2024 budget adoption, the board of commissioners previously approved an inter-fund transfer in the amount of $673,606.27 out of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA fund, to the Capital Reserve Fund to help support the anticipated cost of new body camera in-car systems, a project which resulted in a lower budgeted amount. The township is not exceeding the total line amount budgeted. The existing budgeted capital refunds or funds would be shifted, as summarized below. For the Capital Reserve Fund, 40761, the body worn and in-car camera systems, there's The cost of the gate would be $4,540, thereby reducing it to $924,109.97. Then new line item would be created, 40733, entitled Campus Renovation Capes Projects. This light item will help account for all future facility upgrades at the township municipal campus. Because this upgrade will serve the entire township municipal campus, this capital expense will be booked to administration. The township must encumber all the remaining ARPA funds by the end of 2024 fiscal year, specifically December 31, 2024. We are requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the entry exit gate and the corresponding transfer motion as above, as identified above. The total capital cost of $40,540 would be encumbered as part of the ARPA funds that were originally designated to the police department.
Very good. Thank you for presenting, and thank you for including the bid specs for the board's review. Does the board have any comments or questions on this action?
So you mentioned that incident, and I'm just thinking if somebody has a road rage incident, runs dry, the police department, they won't be able to get to the police department or a safe area, kind of out left there on their own. There's no way for you to know that somebody's at the gate wanting to come in or seeking approval to come in in such a case, is there?
There's a call box there.
Is there?
Yes.
Who answers it?
It's, there's one up here, and there's one downstairs in our office area.
So there is a way to notify that they're having, there's an issue going on?
That's correct.
There's not a call box at the gate.
Not at the gate.
Like, the gate itself wouldn't have a call box.
There's a video phone there.
There is.
Yes, there's a button that they have to push. Like, when we get salt deliveries in public works, they push a button. The receptionist upstairs and the receptionists in police, they can pick up a phone, see in a camera exactly who's there, then they can push a button and open the gate.
But if it's after hours?
If it's after hours, if no one's at those phones, no, it's not monitored.
It doesn't go to dispatch.
Right.
They can come upstairs in the foyer.
They could come up to the foyer and push the emergency button then, yes.
Very good. Any other questions? Any public comment? Or anyone online with any questions?
I had a question. This is Mark Granahan. I just wondered why there's a gate there to begin with.
The gate was originally on the campus plan when they renovated it. It was to make sure that there was a safe working environment down around the back and to filter everybody who's visiting the township building through one entrance. So everybody knew that there would be people coming and going down on the back. Officers are getting in their cars, getting out of the cars. Like I said, there's public works employees working there as well. It just helps with the vehicle traffic, preventing it from going back there.
So, I guess your summary is that you're concerned that there might be people going back in the area where the police force is parking?
That's correct. And there's also township employees back there as well.
I think that township employees, I mean, I have a service building next to my home, but there's no gate on that township building. But if the police officers need protection, which is what I think you're saying, maybe it's a worthwhile expense. Otherwise, to me, it seems like you'd want, it's a public area, you'd expect to have public access. But if what you're saying is the police officers need protection.
Well, a police officer's going to come out. As it stands right now, we've come out several times, and there's people just standing there. And, you know, we're not expecting that. It's kind of our area that's like a safe area for us. So having people drive down there, and number one, they can't get a hold of us if we're inside the building because there's no way for them to alert us that they're here when the gates are up. And people walk down there too as well. So it's, the gates were originally intended to not have vehicle traffic go down there unless the township was aware of it.
Okay, thank you for your response.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one follow-up question, just on the concept and idea of people looking for the police department. I know that we've had, I've witnessed myself, residents or visitors looking for the police, really not quite sure which door to go in up here. Is that something the township can explore, if there is better signage that we might install to direct?
Yeah, I've talked with Tom already. We're going to come up with some kind of different signage that's more direct. As soon as you walk through the door, potentially, you could see the sign for police to go downstairs.
And even coming up this driveway off of Ridge View, if someone's, you know, put their GPS in, it brings you to this campus, but it doesn't direct them necessarily to the front entrance, either during the day when receptionists can help or in the evening when there's a call button. So if that's something the township could.
Yeah, we, Tom and I already started exploring that.
Very good. I think that would be helpful, just overall. Any other public comment online or in-house? No other commissioner comments? Do I have a motion to approve the entry exit gate for a total cost of $40,540, which would be encumbered as part of the ARPA funds that were designated to the police department?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Then item 9D, we have a motion to award contract for the municipal campus sidewalk project, and I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Vander, please present.
Thank you. On July 19, three bids were opened publicly for the municipal campus sidewalk project. This bid was advertised once in local publication as required by law. Thirty-four potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents from the PennBid website. A bid tabulation is attached for your reference. The campus sidewalk project was previously approved by the board to be advertised at the June 19, 2024 meeting. The construction of the sidewalk in front of the municipal campus will connect to the existing sidewalk in front of Attorney Zader's office. This sidewalk will be ADA compliant and will include an Atlanta bus stop and a connection to the Parkland Library. The action we are requesting is township staff respectfully request the Board of Commissioners to award the contract for the campus sidewalk to Construction Masters Services LLC for $209,827.50, which is under budget and allows the engineering costs to be shifted from the general fund and expense to the capital line. This project was budgeted for $294,124.80.
Thank you, Herb. I want to also thank Donna Zachrow-Lagonia for compiling the tabulations for the bids for the board's review. What is the timeline once this is awarded?
We'll have to work with the contractor, but when we did have the pre-construction meeting, we were telling them we wanted to get them in here as quick as possible and try to get this wrapped up by the end of October.
Very nice. Thank you. It's a great plan. I think it will make a nice continuous sidewalk out here for residents and visitors to the municipal campus, library, and all the way up to the bus stop. Are there any board comments or questions on this? Any public comment? Anything online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to award said contract for the municipal campus sidewalk project to Construction Masters LLC in the amount of $209,827.50? I'll second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Then item 9E, we have a motion granting permission. I'll second, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Then item 9E, we have a motion granting permission for Langen Engineering to proceed with sanitary sewer manhole survey. And Herb, if you'd present again?
Thank you. Public Works Utility Division is respectfully asking permission to proceed with Langen Engineering to complete some additional work so we can obtain the correct information that is needed for the Act 537 Plan Checklist for Klein's Island. This work would include locations of the 246 manholes based on GIFs observations by their survey crews using sub-meter accuracy equipment. Their crew will open each manhole, measure the visible invert information. The field survey data will be directly added into the ARC GIS field map that we have for the township, so this data will be readily available in the township GIS. We are requesting a motion by the board of commissioners to approve Langen Engineering to proceed with the sanitary sewer manhole survey. This, there, in the capital budget, we did have $50,000 for sewer planning documents, so that's where this $23,500 would come out of.
Very good, thank you, Herb. Are there any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Still moved.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Then item 10, Correspondents and Information Boards and Commissions, Tom, if you'd please review our upcoming meetings?
Thank you. Upcoming meetings are as follows. Tomorrow night, August 8, Thursday, 7:00 PM, Planning Commission meeting. Wednesday, August 14, 10:00 AM, Civil Service Commission meeting. Excuse me. Friday, August 16, 7:00 PM, Movie in the Parks at Spring House West Park. Wednesday, August 21, 7:00 PM, is a board of commissioners meeting. Details are all posted on the township website calendar.
Good, thank you. Then to item 11, Direction and Discussion. Then to item A, we have Hometown Heroes Policy. If you would present.
Yes, so pursuant to our previous suggestion rendered by the board commissioners enclosed in this packet is draft materials, including a program summary on application delineating a proposed 2025 South Whitehall Township Hometown Heroes Program. So to give a high-level summary of the proposed key aspects of the program, they are identified as follows. So to qualify, a veteran either living or deceased must have lived in South Whitehall Township at some point in their life. Actually, before I get into all that, let me explain what Hometown Heroes is. So it's a banner program in which you are honoring veterans that you're essentially creating a living tribute for the community to honor those members who have served as veterans of the United States Armed Forces, including all branches. So the banner honors a specific South Whitehall Township service member who has a current or former connection to South Whitehall Township. So the banner would feature the service member's name, rank and title, branch of armed service, air of service, for example, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, any of the assignments like the Global War on Terror, service dates, prestigious medals, photo, and a sponsored by section to include the sponsor's name. The banner would measure 24 inches by 48 inches, printed on both sides on heavy-duty vinyl. So registration, as proposed, would open on November 8, 2024, for the South Whitehall Township Hometown Heroes Banner Program. Application for banners will be accepted through March 28, 2025. New banners will be installed in the spring of '25 in advance of Memorial Day. As indicated, the banner would feature the service members' relevant information would be on, would be displayed on township-owned landpoles at the South Whitehall Township Municipal Building for this round. And there would be 12 banner pole locations available for the program. The intent would be to display the banners for at least a two-year period, but after two years, we will assess the condition of the banners and determine when they should be replaced. And then the banners would be offered to the sponsors as a keepsake. If this sponsor does not collect the banner, it would become the property of the township. So just to clarify, the banners are usually, they have about a two-year lifespan. The banner displays would be available on a first-come, first-served basis and will be available until all spots are filled. Selection of the pole in which the banner will be placed is at the discretion of the township. The suggested price of the banner to recoup all associated expenses is $200. And as indicated, the intent would be to display them from Memorial Day through to Veterans Day in observance of all military branch established dates. And then the, also the intent would be to remove and store in the same period in the following year, at which time they will be displayed in the same manner. And that way, the banners aren't out in the brunt of the winter season. So following any discussion and/or questions, administrative personnel, we are seeking confirmation that the parameters and criteria set forth in the program are acceptable. Once confirmed, I believe we can then proceed with the logistical and administrative requirements of the program.
Tom, thank you, and thank you for bringing this to the board for consideration. It's certainly something this board has discussed various times over the last several years, and it's really wonderful to see it come to fruition. I'm in agreement with the parameters that you have delineated in the memo. I think it would be very honoring to have the banners displayed from Memorial Day to veterans, and I look forward to proceeding with this program. But I will open it up to the board for comments on this very honoring program.
Yeah, I think it's great. Can you put in your 2025 work list how to get them on more poles? Because I think the 12 are gonna sell out on November 8.
Yeah, we're gonna look into that. It's challenging along our corridors because the utility poles are not consistent in our township. We could look at parks, we can certainly explore that. And I agree, I think it's going to be a popular program. So we will certainly put that into our longer-term work plan, our '25 work plan, yes.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I'm in favor of this program, and I remember Jeff Marshall at one of our landscapes meetings saying that it depicts what's important to us, and this is very important to all of us. I also, I don't know if, this is just a comment, in my own hometown of Northampton, they have implemented this program, and I've noticed that the names of the veterans sometimes are situated kind of close to their homes. Like it's on Main Street, it's Fourth Street, there's North Caddy, and some of the vets, you're able to do that if they lived on, say, 9th Street. The pole on 9th Street has their image. So I don't know if that's a possibility. I know it's a little more obstacle here, but just having them closer to where they live might be.
For this round, are you saying that, or for a subsequent round?
Subsequent round.
Subsequent round, yes.
We're very limited with what we have initially started going forward.
Well, if we were to explore parks, that might make sense to try to find down the road a park that may be near particular residents, so very good.
Yeah, we can certainly, definitely explore them.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Roth, did you have any comments?
Just adding on to what's already been said. Tom, thanks for putting this together. I know we're in a more challenging situation, given that we don't, we don't have a Main Street necessarily in South Whitehall. So I think what you've come up with is a good pilot program, and I'll be interested to see where the program goes. But as always, it's a great way to honor those who have served in our community, so thank you.
Very good, thank you all for your comments. And Tom, I think you have what you need from the board?
I do, yes.
Very good, thank you. Agenda item 11B, South Whitehall Landscapes Plan, Open Space Historical Agricultural and Natural Resource Preservation Plan, comment, period, update. And I'll ask Chris Stroller, our long-range planner, to please present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. At the July 17 meeting, we talked about the draft landscapes plan and releasing that to the board of commissioners and appropriate boards for comment, period. Thank you to the board members that have submitted comments and feedback already. I just wanted to tonight kind of check in, let you know how that's been going. We've received so far just good comments, just kind of more clarification on a couple of items and some things that we're incorporating already into the draft, but nothing really substantial. So at the previous meeting, we talked about releasing the plan for about a two-week public comment period. So just wanted to check in and confirm that we're ready to release the plan for public comment starting tomorrow, running until August 21. The reason for the August 21 deadline would be to check in at the board of commissioners meeting then to let you know how the comments are potentially reflecting of the plan. So far, we haven't had any questions about it or any comments about it, but we'll see from there. And then just as an update to the timeline, at the 21st meeting, we would look to the board for a motion to send the kind of the final draft plan, barring any substantial comments, to the Environmental Advisory Council. And then the EAC would review it that Monday and make a recommendation back to the board to have the final plan go to the Planning Commission at their September 12 meeting. And from there, we would have a formal recommendation from the Planning Commission for a potential adoption date at the board of commissioners meeting on September 18.
Excellent. I am very much in agreement with your timeline. Thank you for presenting it for review tonight. The plan is fantastic. It's just a culmination of so much work and input by so many people over a great deal of time, so thank you to all, and I'm very much looking forward to moving this forward. Thank you. Other board comments or questions on the timeline? Is everybody in agreement with the dates? Commissioner Roth, are you in agreement with the timeline as presented?
Absolutely, I think we're, I think we're in a good position to move this forward. So yeah, I'm in favor of the timeline.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
We have no old business tonight. Again, courtesy of the floor, agenda item 13, any member of the public would like to address the board on any non-agenda? Yes, sir. Go on up to the microphone and just give us your name and address for the record.
Sam Sackel, 1898, Blue Barn Road. Just to circle back to Janet Moore's issue, she started out the courtesy of the floor. If I understood it right, she has to go back to the zoning hearing board to appeal?
No, the board of commissioners. Well, Tom, go ahead.
Well, if she was an interested party, she has the right to appeal on her own. The board would have nothing to do with that. However, the township is always an interested party to any zoning hearing board appeal. So what we will do is look to see whether there's any merit to the township appealing that decision. So after consulting with staff and with the solicitor, it may be warranted, it may not be warranted. We don't know enough information at this time, so we will then come back with a recommendation.
Okay, and you will notify her of the, your position on it?
Right, we can notify her once the board has confirmed their position. It's not a decision that staff can make ourselves, but we will provide a recommendation to the board in a timely manner. And then once the outcome is confirmed, then?
I was at the meeting, and being at the lot is 60% deficient, from 7,200 square feet to 2,500. I think that was a non-starter, so I don't, I don't even know how they got past that part and okayed it.
We will look at the facts.
I'll let her know that you guys are gonna look it over. I'm sure she'll appreciate that.
Look at the facts at hand and then do our due diligence and then report back to the board, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other member of the public? Is there anyone online who would like to address the board under courtesy of the floor? There is not. I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments?
Still moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session to schedule this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.